All right, good morning, everyone. Happy Monday. Let's stand for a prayer and we'll have a pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day. I pray you'll be with each and every one of our decisions, Lord, for the county, Lord. Just guide each and every one of us. Be with each one in the county, Lord. Keep us all safe, Lord. Be with us as we deal with this virus and the two hurricanes that are coming, Lord, that you'll protect us, Lord, and guide us through these events that are coming our way. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to our final meeting of the month of August, August 24, 2020, just after 9:00 a.m., and this is our second regular meeting of the month. We'll begin here with item number one, as always, public comment time. Anybody have any questions, comments, non-agenda items you want to address at this time? Of course, you may speak to any agenda items as we get to those. All right, let's move on to our minutes. We have items two and three. First item two was our August 10 meeting. That was two weeks ago today, our first regular meeting of the month. We have set of minutes to approve.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve that set of minutes for the 10th.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And second set of minutes was the meeting we had last week on Thursday where we proposed a tax rate, single item agenda.
Make a motion.
Motion's again made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve that set of minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, report from our commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll start on the bottom row. Commissioner Fitch.
All right. First week, we did some chip sealing out in precinct one, and I had one guy out mowing. He finished up his first round, his second round of mowing a precinct, and he's starting doing some side cutting today. We've been doing some paving and base work on 4520, 4530, 2300. And we did some pothole repair down 2850. And worked on a culvert on 2200. And we did some base work on 2200 also. That's it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Parker.
We, of course, helped precinct one week before last, and last week we seal coated the road behind Chapel Hill School down there. It was, we had it, had it ready to seal coat, and we seal coated it. And today, we're starting on, I've got two guys doing side cutting on 4260 and 4245. And today, we're starting on 4315, reworking it. We're gonna tear it up and rework it all the way to Morris County line, so we'll be tied up there for a little while.
Okay. Commissioner Applewhite.
Well, we got back to mowing, and we was, we were putting a few culverts last week, week before last, and we're over on 1905, tearing it up, trying to get it back where we can get it seal coated.
How much seal coating you got to do there? That's a pretty big project, didn't it?
Five miles there, then there's about 15 or something, maybe less, 12 to 15, are go we gotta do.
Anything else? Commissioner Riddle.
We, we seal coated 17.8 tenths mile of seal coat, thanks to precinct, what, two, three, four, and, two, three, and four. The whole crew helped us and did that in, it took a week or four days. And then, since then, we've been patching and trying to get cleaned up from that.
17.8 miles, pretty good run.
It was more than, worked all summer getting them ready, and it just seemed like, didn't seem like that much. We started doing a little spot here, a little spot there, and the first thing you know, it nearly run out of money.
Who's next to seal coat? Anybody know?
I'm gonna, like I said, I get 1905, I'll be ready.
I was pretty close.
I've got, I've got a little bit more that I'm gonna try to do this year, most of my that's gonna come next year, so.
I got them where you, the old, be on them, it'll be, if I don't get to it this year, I'll get to them next year, but it'll, but we got it all ready to seal coat.
All right. Item number five, consider and possibly approve a contract with Fire Chief Larry McCray for Emergency Management Services. Brief history on this. Chief McCray has been our provider of emergency management services. However, it was indirectly through the city of Mount Pleasant. We made payment directly to the city for several years, and they compensated him as part of his salary package. About two months ago, you'll remember that city manager Ed Thatcher asked if we could change that over and just deal with him and pay with him directly rather than going through the city. And his reasoning there was it caused his salary package to be artificially high when being considered for city raises, and it, part of that was really for county work that he was providing for us, and so it had nothing to do with saving them money. It was passed through before. So now that we are contracting directly with Chief McCray, I asked our county attorney, Mr. Coburn, to rework the same agreement that we had, essentially the same agreement that we had with the city, who was providing our emergency management coordinator. And now, this is a document that is between Larry McCray and Titus County directly. Same responsibilities of the emergency management coordinator. It also provides what his rate of pay is. It is currently $1,300 per month, same thing that we were paying to the city that was passed through to him. And as part of our budget considerations this year, we have increased that amount effective October 1 from $1,300 to $1,500 per month. So this sets out this pay schedule here. It defines it as $1,300 a month from August 1 to September 30. This document, I am making it effective October 1, although we began paying him directly, I think probably in July. But this just formalizes that relationship with him and the pay structure there. And then, effective October 1, he will go to $1,500 per month. We write him one check per month. There's no other fringe benefits or payroll taxes that comes out of that. That's just a flat amount that is paid to him. Payments are made on or before the 15th day of each month. So I have that document that I would like for you to approve if you're ready and willing.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker to approve this agreement for services of the emergency management coordinator. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, one opposed. We have next, item number six, consider and possibly approve an interlocal agreement between Titus and Camp County related to funding for the office of District Attorney. This was Mr. Colley's suggestion and idea, and I thought it sounded like a good idea, just to document what the relationship is between Camp and Titus County as far as providing services by our district attorney. And this, what this says is that Camp County, let me just read this, Camp County essentially reimburses Titus here to come up with a complete package. Whereas the office of the District Attorney for the 76th Judicial District represents the state in Camp and Titus, the governing bodies of Camp and Titus have seen fit to financially contribute to funding certain staff salaries of the office of the DA. Therefore, Camp County and Titus County enter into this interlocal agreement and agree to cooperate in funding the district attorney's office as follows. Item one, employees of the district attorney's office will be employees of Titus County. Titus County will manage the disbursement of salaries, withholding health insurance and retirement, and any other financial matters related to the employment of the DA's office. Camp County has agreed to contribute $50,000 annually as its portion of the funding of the staff of the district attorney's office. Each month, Titus County will deliver to Camp County an invoice for the portion of the funds requested, which will detail Camp County's portion of expenses incurred in that regard. Said invoice may be delivered to the Camp County auditor. Within 30 days, Camp County will pay the amount invoiced to Titus County. The obligations under this agreement begin January 1, 2021, and end December 31, 2021. The agreement may, however, be extended annually. This agreement contains the entire agreement between Camp and Titus related to the rights, duties, and obligations described herein. This agreement is governed by and construed in accordance with the laws of the state of Texas. So you'll recall from the budget discussions that Camp had agreed to contribute $50,000 annually. That was $37,500 was the impact on the upcoming new budget, which would be, let me think about this, which would be three quarters of the year, because this goes all the way from January 1 to the end of next year. So three of those quarters falls in the budget year 2021, and one falls outside there. And we had agreed to match on a prorata basis with them contributing essentially 30% and us 70%. And so he just wanted that to be, to be documented exactly how that works. They are our employees, but Camp County reimburses us for their prorata portion. So I didn't know that this was absolutely necessary, but I think that it's good to have a document that states exactly how that relationship works financially between the two counties. So if you can and will and are ready to sign this interlocal agreement between the two counties.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion to approve this interlocal agreement between Camp and Titus County regarding funding for the office of the DA. That motion is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. All in favor, say aye. Item number seven, consider and possibly approve the city of Mount Pleasant's holiday lighting plan, which includes the use of our courthouse and courthouse grounds, and it will take the place of the existing county-owned vertical lighting. I sent you a copy of this document to your emails, and we can discuss this further if you like, but basically, they are agreeing to, as part of their beautification efforts at Christmas time and the extensive monies that they've put into lighting of the downtown area, they would like to upgrade some of their own lighting, and they would like to include the county courthouse in this lighting. They are not asking us for any money. They are willing to foot the bill on all of this. They are just asking for permission to use our courthouse grounds in what I consider to be a fairly elaborate lighting plan, if you have seen those pictures. It involves draping the entire courthouse with strings of lights that run vertically. I'm gonna, I'm gonna estimate maybe about one foot or 18 inches apart, and they'll go from the top tier of the courthouse all the way down to an appropriate point, not where they can be messed with by people on the ground. Obviously, it won't cover the doorway entries, but it does cover up over the, over the windows and makes a really unique look there. They're also going to be putting a lot of lights in our trees. One of the things that, after, after we discussed this, and I met with Ed Thatcher, city manager, and the company, Majestic Christmas Company, that's going to be doing this lighting, and we talked about this. After that, they asked us to do something that would come at our, as our expense. I had, I knew this was coming anyway, and that is to trim back some of our trees so that we have better-looking lights within the trees, and also for the fact that we haven't cut these trees out here that go around the courthouse now in three years. It's time to give them a haircut this year. I probably would have waited till February, but they're asking us to do that earlier. So there will be some expense there in trimming back those trees in order to get the, you know, the best application of those lights that are strung in the trees. These will not be permanently installed lights. They will be installed and then taken down a couple of weeks after the first of the year. They would like to install these fairly early, sometime in probably early to mid-October, just because of the demands that they have on them at Christmas time. They won't be turned on until there's a formal lighting ceremony for the city and the county, be closer to mid-November in time for the holiday season. The only other things that I can anticipate might cost us if we decide to remove the existing lights that are on our courthouse. Just a reminder of those, this is some fairly old wiring. We have to replace a lot of bulbs each year. Ronnie Williams, that has been doing our lighting work, has retired. He is out of the lighting business. We no longer have anybody to service our lights, and last year, we had to use a commercial electrician that had bucket truck and could take care of these rather menial tasks of replacing bulbs and fixing bad sockets. So here is an opportunity for us to upgrade our lighting that's really owned by and paid for by the city of Mount Pleasant, and to produce a pretty dramatic appearance here on the square with all the additional lighting that they're going to be doing in the trees, on the building, and a few other items that will be located on the streetlights, street lamps, and things like that. So again, the most I can see of this costing us is a tree trim job, which was coming along anyway. And then, if we decide to remove our existing lights that hang on the building themselves, it may be time to do that if we are ready to retire those. I think they've served their purpose. They are not LED lights. They are all old incandescent lights. Those bulbs are getting harder and harder to find. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer. Anybody in the audience, any commissioners, anybody would like to see these light pictures, you're welcome to do so. But it's a, it's a six-figure job that the city is proposing. It will be reduced in years ahead after they have made the initial purchase of all these strands of lights. Then they'll be paying for the installation and removal of those lights each year. So again, city is asking for permission to use our grounds, building, trees for all these lights.
Make a motion, we approve it.
I saw Mr. Fitch first, motion by Commissioner Fitch to approve, and I heard Commissioner Parker make the second. Any questions? All right, say a word of thanks to city manager and any of the members of council for the investment that they're making here. All in favor, say aye. We have three pieces of property that I would like for you to consider at the request of Tim Taylor. Each of these are properties that were previously struck off tax rolls. They did not get bids at previous delinquent tax auctions. Let me describe these to you one at a time. There is an error on item number eight that I made. It is not 3.5165 acres, it is .5165 acres. It is lot three, which I interpreted to be lot 3.1565. That is an error. So point, so it's a half an acre in Talco. Let me give you some details here. Block 59, Lot 3, City of Talco. Tim Taylor has received two bids for the purchase of this half acre, which had previously been struck off at the April 4, 2019 auction. The bid is for less than the amount of the judgment, which led to the sheriff's sale, and is also less than the listed appraised value. Mr. Andrew Ryle has offered $3,000 for this. The judgment was $37,805. The taxable value for this property is listed at $65,648. This structure, or this lot, has a house on it which is not habitable and will have to be torn down. It has been abandoned and vacant for many years. It is my opinion that the tract will require extensive cleanup. I also have a bid from Monica Collins for the same property of $2,750. So this looks like a valuable prime piece when you look at the values on the appraisal district, but by the time you get rid of this junk house and you'll end up with a half an acre in Talco, he has gotten a $3,000 bid. So let's see, he's going to ask that you consider that $3,000, get it back on the tax roll, and let Mr. Ryle handle the cleanup there to utilize it for whatever his intended purpose is.
Make a motion, we sell it for $3,000.
Motion made by Commissioner Fitch to accept $3,000 bid. Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Property number two. Lot 1G, block 196. A bid for the purchase of the above referenced track, previously struck off. The city has accepted a bid of $3,000 from Mr. Alan Salinas, and they are willing to sell this property with the consent of other entities involved. So you've got a piece of city property that needs multiple approvals. The sales price for the above lot is for less than the judgment amount of $3,850 and the appraisal value of $6,113. In order for this sale to become final, the consent of the county is necessary. This is located at 516 Austin Street. It is a vacant lot. There's been no interest in this lot since the city obtained them as a trustee.
Make a motion, we take $3,000.
Motion to accept the $3,000 bid. Commissioner Fitch. Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor of the sale of Lot 1, block 196 within the city of Mount Pleasant, $3,000. Say aye.
Aye.
Final tract, we have the same bidder here, a bid for the purchase of Lot 3, block 311A, also a city of Mount Pleasant lot. Mr. Alan Salinas offers $2,000 for this one. Sale price, less than the judgment, less than the appraised value. Judgment was $12,000. The appraisal value, $51,998, which included the value of a structure on the lot uninhabitable and must be torn down. Appraised value of just the lot was $1,565. Therefore, the, before the sale can be final, we need multiple approvals, and we are one of those approvals to allow the city to sell this to, at the $2,000 bid.
Make a motion.
Motion's made to sell at $2,000. Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item number 11, this is an annual task that we have about this time each year, consider and possibly approve sheriffs and constables fees for 2021. State asks us to either confirm existing values or to make any changes. Our constables have told me they're, they believe that the fees are in line and are appropriate, and to leave them the same. And so with that input from them, I'm gonna recommend that you allow me to report back to the state and say that our sheriffs and constables fees remain the same for the upcoming year.
Make that motion.
All right, motion to report to the state to leave values the same for the upcoming 2021. That motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite. Second. Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That brings us to our oral and written reports of county officials. Anybody need a copy of that? I have an extra, your emailed copies of that, and you'll recall Barbara's gonna continue to do that in the future and send you that by email.
Make a motion, we approve the report.
Motion is made for approval by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me get your signing copies for those. I'll get you those with the, with the treasurer's report. Item 13 is our treasurer's report, provided to you by Cheryl.
Make a motion to approve.
Was that you, Commissioner Applewhite, made the motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have budget amendments here, number 34, 35, 36, 37. Barbara, you want to speak to any of these before I just read what you've got here? Item number 34, reason for the amendment is to increase funds available in the line item in each precinct to fund repairs to shared equipment with offsetting decrease to other road materials or contingency resulting in no change to overall precinct budgets. So we've got some shared equipment that, relatively new stuff, that we don't have much history of what it costs to repair and maintain this equipment. We made a stab at it in our budget for this year. It has proven to be not quite enough, and so we are reducing your other road materials budget to allow us to put, looks like $2,500 into the pot to cover the rest of this year. This will just go through the end of September, right? And will enable us to complete any repair and maintenance needs to those shared pieces of equipment. So again, these are pieces that are used by all four commissioners, and so no real way to absolutely allocate expenses other than to just share it equally amongst you. So that puts $10,000 more into this budget. And again, as we have history to show us how much is appropriate each year, we will utilize those more current numbers. So that's the first one, number 34. So that's the first one, number 34. Number 35, to increase funds available in the capital outlay item for the purchase of a front-end loader attachment for the tractor that is already owned. To increase funds available in the repairs line item to cover the cost repairs. Both of these items are funded with an offsetting decrease in road oil resulting in no overall change. This impacts Precinct 2, Commissioner Fitch. Anything we need to know on this, Commissioner?
I've been running a running loader, so it gets steered, so we come up with this idea, we use our tractor we already got, put a loader on it, and we'll be back in business.
Okay. So that, that pulls $21,000 out of road oil. It puts $11,000 in there for a capital purchase and another $10,000 in for repairs. That's item 35. Item 36 relates to our commissary fund at the sheriff's office. Reason is to increase funds available in the recreation supplies line item with an offsetting decrease to the prisoner uniforms line item. So this is a small adjustment of $500 affecting those two line items, and it's not new money. And then last, item number 37, this relates to our HAVA security grant that Pam Holmes has talked to us about, and this sets up the amount that we have to match there. So the reason is to set up the grant budget for the Help Americans Vote Act for election security based on the funds received. And we've already gotten that money, that $80,000 we got back on August 11. So we're setting up the budget to match that, which was an $8,000 match on that $88,000 receipt. We approved this in Commissioner's Court back on June the 8th. So have a grant required match 8,000 on an $80,000 receipt.
Make a motion, we approve budget amendment.
Motion to approve budget adjustment number 37. Any questions on any of those? Need a second? Did I get a second? Second from Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item 15, sign pay orders, approve payment of bills.
Make a motion, we pay our bill.
Motion to pay bills, Commissioner Parker?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Item 16, closing comments. The only thing that I had here was to let you know that, and you, and I'm sure all of you already know this, they've made the decision to not have the county fair this year. They are going to have some of the, some of the, what do you call it? Shows, livestock shows?
Livestock show.
Where the, the related auctions that go on, these kids have been raising these animals, and to not have that event would be a pretty major deal. They'll spread it out over two or three meeting times, at least three times.
Three days in October.
Three days in October. Give these chance for these kids to show and sell the animals that they've been working on this past school year, and we won't have the big carnival and all the events unfortunately that we typically have. That's bad news for our county, but the fair association felt like, under the current COVID environment, this wasn't a year to have huge crowds gathering at the civic center and the fairgrounds, as we can all understand that. And they will conduct these, these events in an appropriate manner with social distancing, et cetera, et cetera. That's all I wanted you to know and wanted the public to know if they were not aware of that, so no, no big fair and carnival event coming up at the end of September. That's all I've got. Commissioner Riddle?
On the, the emergency management for the fire department, there's, there's a lot of people that do this for a lot less than $1,500 a month. I think Parish, Lamar County, they have a guy, used to be a fireman in Mount Pleasant's emergency manager. Camp County has a guy that charges them nothing. And then I'm wondering, it looks like little fake bookkeeping. If we're going to give $50,000 to the city for the fire department, and we already give them $891,000, now is the city going to, he's a county employee, so now we're going to give him $1,500 a month. So that's going to make us almost a million dollars for that. All the people that have a county fire department, some of them have a county fire chief, but we have a county fire chief, and the city fire chief is the same guy. The guy in Lamar County is a fireman, like I said, from, he works in Greenville or Suffolk Springs. But there's no one that pays that kind of money for the emergency management people that I know of. And I, and I think, I think it's really bad, and nobody else. Hopkins County has a county fire department. They have about $800,000 budget for that, which is, the only thing that's even close to our budget, but ours beats them. So I, I don't know, there's plenty of people that are assistant chiefs that would jump on that job as a county fire chief and serve the purposes of emergency management. I just think it's a little tricky bookkeeping. If city can reduce their budget by $50,000, and then they charge a county budget, don't the people in the city realize that city people have to pay the county budget and the city? So if you move the expense from the fire department over to the county, from the city, you can make Mr. Ed look good, but you're not going to make the city people living in the city look good. Listen, that's what they call fake book, bookkeeping, maybe. I don't know how, how to describe it, but I don't, I don't approve of it. I think it's playing with the numbers, just for the record. Those are my opinions.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Applewhite, nothing. Commissioner Parker, nothing. Commissioner Fitch?
I have anything.
All righty. Anyone else? Thank you for your attendance. 9:40, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, and will be done today.
Make that motion.
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Applewhite?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.